Under era, the Sunshine Wall, the Runway Board of Education media school. The board of education is compliant with chapter 231 of the public laws of 1975 entitled the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as posting notices in the borough hall. Runway Post Office, Murrayville School, Alien Bigham School, Grace Downing School, and the Runway Public School District website.
Here.
Angel Bebe?
Here.
Charles here?
Sorry about that.
Naomi Davison?
Just a second.
Maria Panzarella?
Patricia Smith?
Here.
Samantha Spalding?
Lynn Corillo?
Here.
And Amy Barrett?
Here.
We have a forum. Okay, thank you.
I could just interrupt what they workshop this evening. I think I'd like to present the presentation right there first because that'll allow for any question or like that we have instead of leaving at the end. There's also some issues with ethics forms which if we can have a couple minutes before the regular meeting, we can go use computer lab and we can have it set up in there and we can get those things done right away. So you don't have to do that stuff now. It's all done electronically.
As of January 1st.
As of January 1st, so there's no more paper forms.
Paper, gotcha.
So if you have your paper form, great, bring these. Good cheat sheet for you.
Yeah.
It should be everybody's folder.
Yes.
It is in your green folder and all some other items for you. Again, as executive minister in there, if you pick certain act after you review them and then anything else as well. And there's still has the stream line things. State, as I told earlier, you have lack of people up in the state office. It is 2018, so we can do that. It's easy to do. It's not too difficult. But before we do go over the agenda, we have been budget developing now for a couple months. One of the things that was budgeted last year as far as technology concerned, we're talking about it a couple of times, or excuse me, budget for was technology and we have not used that money yet this year. So we're able to use, would like to use some of the money coming up soon to launch the beginnings of our one-to-one initiative, which is going to be basically a device for all students in grades five through eight. I'm going to ask you to listen with an open mind, ask questions as we go along here. You know, I've done a couple of webinars and I've got the carries of a couple of things and you know, it's overwhelming if you think it's too overwhelming. It's doable. It's just you have to kind of take it slow. I think we're already put the steps in place on how we're going to implement this, starting as soon as we get these in. Get them in teacher's hands first, get them in student's hands so we can move on with some of that. So back to the cameras, I'll show you some few slides.
No, you didn't.
No, yeah. So as I'm trying to each says, well, but in order to do any type of initiative like this, especially with the number of students we will be implementing this for, it needs to be strategic, it needs to be well thought out, and we need to make sure that we're not jumping the gun in any way, shape, or form prior to doing this. In doing this, what we're trying to do is engage students at the highest level, close the digital divide that we currently have, and make sure that we're providing students with as much we can offer them in the Runway Tool District that are going to make them 21st century learners. And when you look at our Common Core standards, that's everything their focus though is, how are we going to make students college and career ready for when they leave our schools and they move on to what they need to experience in the future. In the presentation, I'm going to go over the purpose of why we're doing this, what training will take place, an implementation rollout so you have an idea of what we're looking at, management of the devices, how does this tie in with our current curriculum, and then if time allows, I might show afterwards a little video on Chromebooks, just so you have an idea of what we're looking at and why we're looking at this device in particular. Purpose. As I said before, we want to partner students with 21st century skills, making them deep thinkers, making them think outside the box, allowing them different venues to get answers and information from. We want to make sure that we're not just presenting students information in one format, but we're providing multiple formats for students to learn, and different venues for them to actually show their responses to teachers and to other students themselves. We want to foster creativity, allow students different ways of showing their responses, allow students different ways of expressing themselves in the classroom where they might be able to extend their regular thinking to make it their own and make school more engaging for them, and offer them those opportunities. Increase programming. One of my biggest responsibilities when I came into the district as supervisor of curriculum instruction was to look at where we currently were, currently are, as a district. And one of the things I found was making sure that curriculum was in place and making sure the right programming was in place. So that way, we're fully differentiated. For accelerated programs, and I'll talk more about that, myself and Mr. Peely had the pleasure of actually going to Delsey Regional School District, which now encompasses a pre-K through 12th grade. They are doing a one-to-one initiative and we got to view their fourth through sixth grade program and how it was running. They just implemented those three grade levels this current year, and some of the ideas that we got in the two-hour session that we were there in programming alone were exceptional. Now, does that mean that we're going to implement the same programming that they have? No. But for me, as an educator, I always enjoy it when I'm getting new ideas as far as how I can push our students and staff to the next level and offer those additional opportunities. One thing that I was speaking with Mr. Peely about was with programming, was our gifted and talented program. And in some grade levels, students might do more than in other grade levels with that program. One of the things that we were discussing was how can we use a one-to-one initiative to really extend that program? And one of the ways that students were doing it was through blogging, where they would have different assignments and they were blogging about all these different research items and presenting it in different venues, and it really extended their learning and extended the opportunities because scheduling was no longer a problem. This was something that was built in. Students were able to go in and on their devices at their own time, at their own leisure, to extend their learning in what was taking place. In addition to that, it wasn't just one assignment. It was multiple assignments that you had to choose from. And in this type of environment, that's what we need to really foster within our students is getting them where they need to be, but allowing them to take ownership over parts of it as well, and finding their own interest to really push their, push their learning. Engaging students, which I've been discussing, and then of course, differentiating instruction. Our goal is to make sure that not only are we just, my big thing is difference between differentiating and modifying. When you modify, it means you're taking ten problems and you're bringing it down to five. Differentiating means instead of you doing a poster project, I have you doing an oral presentation in front of the class. I have you writing a paper about what you're learning and why you're learning it. It doesn't matter what means you're using to share the information. What matters is that you're learning the information and that you're walking out the door with that knowledge base.
Can I stop you?
Absolutely.
What is the definition of one-to-one initiative?
One-to-one initiative, definition is when you have one device for every one student.
Okay.
So this means every student in this case, what we're looking to do is provide every student with an electronic device within grade five, ideally through eight. And we'll discuss the reason, our thought bases behind the grade levels that were selected and how we plan on doing that. Training. One of the things that we've started doing is going into this type of initiatives, we don't want to just say, okay, here are the devices, go for it, have fun. What we want to do is we want to try to guide staff members as much as possible, yet still give them flexibility in terms of what programs they're using. One thing that Runway already has in place, which is difficult to set up at times, so it's great that we already have it in place, is Google Apps for education. And what that allows us to do is it allows us to create an account for every single one of our staff members. It also allows us to create an account for our students, which is an easy thing to upload and manage. Has anyone used, does anyone use Gmail?
Yes.
Or Google Drive or anything like that? One of the things that I'll show you was the Chromebooks. With Google, what's nice about it is that they have what's called a Google Drive. And the Google Drive is basically storage. You can store presentations, you can store writing samples, you can store all different things within your Google Drive, like a USB drive. But it's in the cloud, so you don't, anywhere that there's internet, you can log on, get access to your Google Drive. You can also save it as a hard copy directly on your device, but it gives you access to them. One of the benefits that I used when I was teaching was through the Google Apps, I was able to share documents with my students, have them add to the documents I shared with them, and as a teacher, I was able to see every single update that was done and which students made what update within that assignment. So you can share among your peers, and as a ward, we can have one document that each and every single one of you are working on. And for me, as the administrator of it, I can then look and see who did what part of it, and see who added which component, and see who contributed to the assignment and who made this change. It shows everything. So it's one of the benefits. Now, in terms of professional development, this is something that we're starting to work on with teachers. In our last professional development, we worked with sixth through eighth grade teachers and special area teachers on Google Apps. So that way, they'll get a better idea. One of the things that you pay more money for at times is when you use specific products that constantly need to be updated. With the Google Apps, it's being updated online, so you're not having to go through a costly update every three years. It's automatically getting updated, and it has similar programs for Word, for presentations, for spreadsheets that you need to create, similar to what students might be using in other formats as well.
It's also kind of, it's also a time thing. Like there's no, a tech person does not go to each classroom and update that lab. So everything's done along that. So it's not like that's saving resource time as well for that person. So it's another advantage, plus side for that.
To continue these trainings, we're going to be getting some devices in shortly that will automatically be given to staff members, because we want them in the staff members' hands as soon as possible, so that way they can have as much experience with the devices prior to having to actually use the devices with students, although they will be able to use the devices as soon as they get them. As a part of training, for me, my attention span isn't always the greatest at times. I like to move from topic to topic. So what I plan on doing is little 20-minute trainings at the end of the days, 2:15 to 2:40, or I apologize, 2:15 to 2:35. That's how you do a 25-minute training, on different sites and resources that staff members can use, because within the short little time span, you can accomplish a lot. Sessions will be held for parents and students, of course, on using the devices. Ideally, within the next month, we'll be reaching out to parents to let them know of what's coming up, so that way we can alleviate any concerns whatsoever that any parent might have regarding their student using these devices on a regular basis. Because for me, if there's any questions or concerns, I want to address them as quickly as possible to alleviate any worries that others might have.
What would be some examples that parents would have worries about?
I'm actually going to bring that up in the final slides without commenting any questions that have been discussed with other districts and also that, you know, in talking about this, in speaking to teachers, in speaking to administrators, in speaking to my personal friends, saying, you know, what concerns do you see that need to be addressed? Because for me, I don't want to present on anything or go into anything if I don't have an answer or a solution that I can come up with.
We do have that time built in for teachers heading into the day. Kids leave here at 2:15, but there are a bunch there until 2:40, so an additional, like money you got to pay them, be trained, I think that's part of their, you know, a daily contract.
And to be honest with you, we'll stay that time, but if people want to stay later too, discuss what's going on, that's perfectly fine as well. But we'll say, you know, we'll put on the timer and say, okay, by this time, we'll be done.
Now, these 20-minute training sessions, excuse me, should I make interruption?
Uh-huh.
Would that be part of their professional development, their logging and?
They can earn hours towards that.
Good.
Also, of course, summer sessions will be made available to build a greater comfort for September, whether it be for staff, students, or parents. Any questions on training?
Just the one I have, is you said you're going to address it later.
Implementation and rollout. During the 1314, within the 1314 budget, we have money planned for technology purchase. So we will be able to purchase a good amount of these devices this year, and ideally not only will for the staff, but also we'll be able to put some of the devices in classrooms. So instead of having, Miranda, here's your device, Angel, here's your device, we won't be giving them directly to students at this time. We might just take every classroom we're going to use and put five to six devices in each classroom, so that way students get experience with these specific devices, teachers have experience working these devices in their rooms, an idea of what works, what works best, so that way come September, we have a better idea of what we're looking at. This year, we're looking to purchase 200 devices that will be given to teachers in classrooms. Remain devices will be purchased during the summer months for September. Devices will be given to fifth through eighth grade students ideally fall 2014 after signed documents have been returned and students have been trained, device boot camp. So let me touch on that last one. In terms of things being returned, some districts will charge parents a fee to provide their student with a device. At this point in time, it was a collective thought that we would not be charging a fee to provide students with the device. What parents will be signing though, is a contract, and students will be signing as well, stating if you mishandled the device. So that's not me accidentally walking by Amy's desk and knocking it over. That's me, you know, setting Amy, taking the thing, throwing it against the wall, and it shatters. There's a responsibility that needs to be taken on the parents and students for that. So will they be paying the entire cost of the device? No. But most school districts stick with $100 policy, and that can, doesn't have to be all at once, but it can be done in installments and things like that, and that's extreme. And that's your extreme cases. And then going into the device boot camp, it's so important before these devices are given to students that everything is going over. How do you handle the device in the classroom? How are you handling the device walking through the hallways? Are you carrying the device outside of cases? And there's certain things that need to be gone over, and Mr. Peely, myself, Mr. Wink, the teachers, we've discussed. Some of the things that are most difficult in moving to a one-to-one initiative is comfort, because you're handling different situations. So if the student's on the wrong website that they're not supposed to be on in the middle of your class, what do you do? So the question is, what if the student's not looking at the right assignment during your class? What do you do in that situation and comparing it to the following? Of course, there's different extremes for every situation, but it's changing our mentality and thought as far as how we look at things and how we're managing things. Students forget their devices. What happens? They don't have a device to use for that day. Do they share with someone else in the class? One thing we are looking to do is having two to three computers, and most of our classrooms already have two to three electronic devices in them already, but those would be like a computer that Chad would use when he forgets his device one day, or he didn't charge his device that night. And that would be something that would be set up with the staff members and the students. And of course, that's being done in collaboration with administration as well, but it's changing that concept as far as how do you manage a classroom when you have these devices? And there's going to be comments where you're going to say, all the devices are shot, put them in the area underneath your desk. There's different management things that need to be addressed that we will be addressing with students and staff. Questions on implementation rollout, yes?
Couple of questions.
Sure.
First of all, the current tablet that we have, who is going to use, is this going to be in addition to what we already have?
We currently have two iPad parts.
Right.
We have two laptop parts that are, one's house in the library and one's for sign-out. With fourth grade, fourth grade, we have additional devices available to them. We would also make sure that the iPad parts were available. So if there's situations where a fifth through eighth grade teacher wanted to sign out iPads for students to have a different experience, or wanted to use the iPad specifically for something, that could be made available as well.
Okay. And what about the contract for them? Is that going to be, are they going to do their contract in the iPad?
What's different with the iPads and what we currently have is I think students sign off in their agenda books currently on what the expectation is because it's a school device.
Think she might, what the payment is, the least purchase.
Payment, right.
With the Chromebooks or?
With iPad.
With iPad.
I think that's our, next year will be our third year with iPad, with at least purchasing.
We're not sending them home, no.
I know that.
Yeah, we're paying for them, that's the district.
We're paying for that, at least, a lease purchase through the iPad. The next year, I believe, is.
Is the final year, because this is year two.
Okay, so that was taken into consideration too, that, because I want to, okay, that's more over budgeting, that's all.
No, not at all.
No.
Now, to leave with that question as well, will it be a continuous of the iPads then, the least purchase?
We'd have to discuss that.
That's still something in the room, okay.
I don't think we'll be totally smart just to do away with them, just because of the very undercount.
Now, what's the population, five through eight here, Ms. Stone? What are we standing with?
We have a little bit under, I will say around three, seven to three.
Three, eight, maybe.
Okay, so you definitely need to, I mean, you're talking about 200 devices, that's fine, that's not covering the entire population of the building.
Well, no, it's 200 devices that we'll be purchasing currently.
Only 13, 14.
This year, right.
And then over the summer months, we would be purchasing the rest of the ones necessary for the 14th grade.
You should have your real life. Yeah, anybody starts July 1.
The staff is getting it.
And at first, we were only going to be doing three grade levels. However, we've been given a couple of different offers from different companies that might allow us to do four grade levels. So if we're able to, we would love to do five through eight, and then the eighth grade books, the following year, would simply go to the rising fourth graders who would be going into fifth grade.
So you're saying, once this child receives this device in fifth grade, that's their device to be taken care of and used through their entire time if they're here till they graduate?
At this point in time, we will probably be collecting them at the end of the year.
Oh, of course, I'm saying that they're going to.
Unless, but once again, no, if there's special programs going on through the summertime, it might be an opportunity for the student to continue using their device over the course of the summer, for whatever the reason might be.
Okay. I guess that's my biggest concern is logistically, how do you, how do you track all these devices?
And honestly, a lot of that comes in with staff. And you know, as a homeroom teacher, homeroom teachers many times are making sure that everything's correct. The devices that we're looking at have an eight-second startup time. From the time you open the book to the time that everything's good to go, it's eight seconds. At times, it's quicker. But I mean, each day, just like you're taking attendance, it's okay because everyone has their book. Is everything working correctly?
And we've got chargers in each classroom too, so in case, you know, I forgot mine, you can plug it in. It doesn't take all day for it to charge. You can have enough juice in there to.
Usually eight to nine hours.
Another point maybe that you're asking, I know textbooks are numbered. I would imagine these Chromebooks will have, they have an ID number, and then ID number will be assigned to each student.
Absolutely.
Right, so this, so fifth through eighth we're doing?
What's that?
We're doing fifth through eighth only.
Fifth through eighth.
And then in September, what is buying the extra, we need fourth, fifth, through eighth and at this.
Yes.
Right? So an iPad parts will then be flipped to the maintenance kindergarten report.
Yes, and as of right now, I was speaking with Ms. Yasi today, pretty much each classroom in Bigham and Downing are able to have four to five iPads regularly in their rooms that they're using, for map stations, language art stations, that they're using on a daily basis. One thing that we are doing, we had one issue technology-wise, is the fact that they were using so much of the technology at one time during certain periods of the day, that the servers were kind of, and we were asked to please tell them to slow down. We're like, you can't ask them to slow down, we're just asking them to pick it up, you know? We're doing such a great job with what we see them doing. But right now, we have 20 gigahertz through the district, or mega, you know, something. We're moving from 20, well, my tech, my C-Lab, that's why I lost myself.
I got it, I got it.
But there you go. We're driving from 20 to 200. So we're really increasing our speeds within the district.
When?
And over the summer, as of July 1, I spoke with Jeanette last week. She said there will be one day that as a district, we would be shut down internet-wise because everything would be getting moved over.
Now, is that done, all it's been a little bit about systems and the room that we incur when I do mine to five, does somebody know how to fix network issues in the building?
Yeah.
Or is that not a source thing?
Yeah.
She would be able to reconfigure and do all that? Any glitches she can handle? You said?
No.
Yeah, okay.
Well, she does it now, but there's network problems.
There's network problems today.
Okay.
A major one, and she had to fix within.
Cost of switching from 20 to 200 gigs or whatever.
It was only $500 or something like that.
And as we plan for next year's budget, that's a lot of what we're putting into place currently is making sure that we're able to support it and that we're ready for park.
Right, I have a couple of questions. So how many extra Chromebooks have you allotted for when those go down?
At this point in time, we have 15 that we've allotted for, that will be ready and available if any go down.
Okay.
We've been told by the vendors that, because each of them, a big thing that we're doing is making sure that we have a four-year warranty.
Right.
That we're getting on each of the devices, so that way.
So we purchase them?
Yes.
So when we purchase them, you know how technology is, like, it's like on a six-month turnaround, right? Every, every six months, there's something new, right? So if we're buying them for four years, and technically in two, they're going to be, only stop the lead with whatever the technology, I'm just playing devil's advocate.
Absolutely.
So if that's the case, is there a function on, because I don't know about Chromebooks. My question is, is it a possibility to at any point in the near future buy our textbooks and our updates via app download? I guess I'm thinking something.
Yes.
That would be the device, that would be a device issue that would not have Chromebooks. Is it, is that device capable to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
One of the things that, of this, working with Ms. May Tyg as well, is she's also looking at different eBooks and e-readers. So not only will she be purchasing books for the library, but there's also opportunities where students are able, and I thought this was cool because I said, I don't get it, you need to explain it to me, please. But it's kind of like a Kindle, where, but it's in the library, so you can actually check a book out via our school website and the phone, and it would go onto your device for a two-week period, and then it disappears. Because we have certain numbers of licenses for each of the books that she purchases, and that would simply go back into her system for someone else to check out, or in certain cases, she can also get unlimited licenses. So in the case of a textbook, or in the case where we have an entire grade level, doing Watson's Go to Birmingham in sixth grade, we could purchase an unlimited number of licenses if we had to, and it might be more cost-effective for us to do that than to purchase all the books and materials.
Right. Absolutely. The library, our local library, which anybody can join for free, also has eBooks. You can take your device there, so if you don't have enough here, I wonder if you could tap into that if you worked with the, if she's been very willing to work.
And with the devices, we're looking, in order to make it fully effective, we want to send the devices home with the students. We want them to be able to use the device whether they're at anywhere that has wireless internet capable capabilities, whether it be home, whether it be the mall, whether it be the McDonald's, whether it be the local library, where they can work on projects and they can work on different things. Since the devices will have apps available, they might be able to hook up to the local library where they can check books out that way as well, and that might be something we can work with the library on.
I think she said there were some glitches in the system because they got another subscription for year three.
That's not, that's not.
For selling their book, yeah.
Did I answer all of your questions?
Okay.
Anyone outside the implementation rollout? Management. One of the reasons why we are looking at Chromebooks is number one, for cost purpose. Since you don't have as much software loaded onto the device, since everything's done through the internet electronically, it reduces the cost in terms of management. You're not putting those updates or softwares onto the computer. So one of the things that we have to purchase with the devices is the management component with it, where everything can be done remotely. So whether it be Jeanette, myself, or teacher leaders, you know, we have extremely tech-savvy teachers among us who are more than willing to have, have that ability to be able to make changes as needed. And for me, I think it's important to empower that ability and allow them to do those things. The greatest benefit of the Chromebook is that they are manageable, and also, as Mark said, this reduces the number of requests submitted to our technology department. So it makes it a little bit more manageable for everyone to handle. Firewalls. As of right now, Jeanette said the firewalls that are on at school will remain on at home. Now, that being said, we're going to be writing in the contract that parents and students are signing, that we can't guarantee what students are able to get through the firewalls at your house. We can guarantee what they're able to get on in our district. So it's to make sure that parents are aware that they're speaking with their students also about internet safety, what is appropriate to do on computers at home, and that when the devices are going home, it's that parent who's managing their student with the device. It's not the school at that time. We're sending the device home for them to have that access and for them to be able to work on assignments and things at home as well. Now, if students don't have access at home, let's say, what we will be doing is using, making internet affordable, which offering that to parents where they can actually get internet in their home, where I take it to 999 to 1999 at a lower cost. Of course, there's other places in the local area where they can go for wireless internet, or if need be. And when I was an administrator of a previous district, I had to take the device away from one of my students. Or if need be, um and when I was an administrator in our previous district, I had to take the device away from one of my students. And in that situation, they were provided with other alternatives to the assignments that they were given, um where they weren't doing them on the device, but they were doing them in paper pencil. But that was also an extreme situation that isn't always the norm.
Now, what is the liability for the school district if something gets awry with this device being home and and it, yeah, depending how, depending how contracts can go, so I'm not.
Well, I mean, we do have the warranty in place, so that was. Now, in most districts, what takes place is if something happens at home, it gets lost or stolen. The parents are responsible for filing a report with the police department to let them know that it's lost or stolen. Um and that filed report needs to be submitted to the district before we're able to do anything in terms of replacement or giving them things back.
I guess my biggest concern here, internet access is crazy. And I'm concerned about the liability of the school district and this board. If a child gets this device home and, I mean, as to even he or she, they end up on a site that's totally unacceptable for a young student to be on, and things go on, and contacts remain, and you talk, you know, it's all kinds of craziness. I mean, I'm not being devil's advocate here, but I'm just wondering, how do we as a board protect, you know, ourselves in this district against any liable suits, against anything that could go on? A parent, you know, suing the district?
I know, that isn't part of the agreements that I've seen. So I mean, this isn't something, again, there's districts have done this for six, seven years now.
Right.
Pretty lengthy, you know, term to do for it, but I mean, there's detailed descriptions of who's liable for anything.
Okay.
I mean, you've seen some of the news where, you know, the schools are activating the cameras when the kids, you know what I mean? Something like that, but, you know, it's pretty strong, it's supported by.
Is there locks?
Well.
That's the firewall, that's the firewall.
We have firewalls in place.
That we can implement though on it?
Now, what Jeanette said was, those blocks will remain on the device itself when they're taken outside of the school.
So if you take a Facebook here, okay, or she's a Facebook, because if any kid in eighth grade is trying to get off.
Exactly.
When he or she takes that device home, it's still locked on Facebook. That's the firewall travels through that device.
It does. Okay, so how would they get around that?
It's, well, here's what I'll tell you, as an administrator, students are very creative in terms of what they do.
No, I'm asking, I'm, I'm.
Oh, the way that, they're starting sites that you can go through, for example, Twitter. Students loved going on Twitter, it was blocked in the school district I was previously in. However, students realized that if you go to google.com, type in Twitter, the link that comes up for Twitter takes you to that site, it runs to the firewall. That's not something we as a district can know, when I was an administrator, I was very close with some of my, you know, cool kids. And I'd say, hey, I didn't want to follow that. And then this one, after they'd tell me, I would then have our IP version locked in, that's what I did. But I mean, you, you need to try, there's always gonna be changes you need to try to deal, because it's, it's, you know.
To play, to play um that devil's advocate.
Sure.
Something happens as a district, and I'm not saying that we are, where does our liability come in? In the sense of such and such went home and found that way to bully so-and-so. And I understand at that point, him would probably kick in, because it would at that point.
As soon as you say bully.
Okay, right. So let's say it was something else, let's say it was something predatory. And at that point, where does such, we sent them home with that device. Their family chose not to give them a device. Their family chose not to give them that cellphone to be online, to, to text back and forth. How, what, when something, if it was to happen to someone, and that child was to get be harmed, and they were to say, name us in suit, what then?
Once again, I think it goes back to, for me, it goes back to the education. It goes back to how are we educating parents on how to work with devices in the home? If parents don't want to be allowed to use the device at home, that's a parent's choice in priority.
Okay.
Purely.
So in other words, they would not have to sign the contract, right?
They would have to sign the contract if we want.
If they don't, you have the year tools.
And you know, and if, they could simply write, tell us, you know, we do not want them using the devices at home. But I mean, ideally, there's more benefits and negatives to them having that access and ability. So whether that be the parents are monitoring the device used at home or anything like that, that's what I would vote for.
I don't disagree with that. I'm not saying that I do or don't in that aspect. What I'm saying is legally, legally.
Let the legal implications for the district to cover that.
That's my question, legally.
That would be good to ask our attorney.
I think that's something that when we draw up the forms and what we want them to look like, how are our parents going to?
And again, this not being something that's like brand new, I'm sure, I'm making sure that, and we'll make sure that anything we put in that.
Right, I'm sure it's out there.
The correct policies are in place, the correct forms are in place, so that way we're.
Right, absolutely. Right, cost test and development board. Now, is there anything, is there anything that Katie, Katie Cop had brought to us? Did you ever sit through this? Is there anything that he had of all of those, um I'm not gonna call it spyware, because that doesn't sound right, but I guess it really is.
Do you have the ability, you already have the ability though?
As a management process, you can see what everyone's doing, effectively, and where they're going, and what they're doing on their devices.
Okay.
I might not have, um, no, because it's, it's not within our network, it's anywhere the devices go.
Okay.
We have everyone to manage and block things.
So who would be responsible for that management and that, that ability?
There would be multiple.
To check in on students to make sure that, make sure that devices are, you know, being used in a proper way to make sure that blocks and firewalls are set up. Who is in the realm of our staff, who is going to be responsible for that? Is that Jeanette's responsibility?
Well, I think that's gonna be a collective effort, and to be honest with you, as they're being used in the classrooms, and as soon as you're taking them home, te- teachers and staff members are gonna hear certain things.
Right.
Once those become evident, Jeanette would have that ability, I would have that ability. We would have certain teacher leaders who would be in place.
Okay.
So that way, if we get a new student, there's certain teachers who might be able to simply add that student into the system, get them logged in, so that way they can be set up with the device.
Okay, so this framework still is in the making, is what you're saying, this framework's.
I don't, not that it's necessarily, you know, we have a good idea of what's in place and what we're gonna be doing. I don't wanna simply say it would be myself or Jeanette.
No, I don't want to do that either.
For me, it's opening the access up to, I can do it, Jeanette can do it, um you know, shared.
Only person each.
Exactly.
Right, but I, I don't want to come back and smack even you in the face saying, well, you know, Mrs. Smith said, oh no, I thought Mrs. Jones was taking care of that aspect. You know, you gotta make sure that you have around yourself, sign it.
And just like we have for um our bullying policies, there's certain procedures that are followed. So Ms. Bay and Ms. Callahan might be the ones who do the investigation. Once the investigations are done, they go to the building principals, once those are signed off on, they go to Mark and then sent to me. So we would have a similar thing in place if there's any concerns with the devices as well, um that they would follow. Usually, it comes from staff to building administration to myself or Mr. I teaching. And then, of course, devices will be park-ready, meaning as we move into the park assessment, um students will be able to use these devices for park. And it would make sure that we were at that level, and we'd be able to get tests done at an appropriate time. Curriculum, we've already discussed some of these things, eBooks, in terms of looking at new curriculums, making sure that um we're getting the most out of what we have. And since books are constantly being updated, um you can buy new entire series of books, and within the next year, a whole new series is coming out. And it's constantly being updated and revised. With the e versions of things, things get updated online much quicker, and it um can be less costly year to year than purchasing a whole series. Increased resources, differentiation, flipped classrooms where students actually get to see lessons prior to being exposed to the lesson. So when they come into class to learn something new they've already seen, a five to ten minute video on what they're gonna be taught that next day. Um I spoke to a fourth grade teacher who was using that. They have certain sites such as Khan Academy, um and different ways that teachers are able to do that. We've actually just had three staff members who attended a flipped classroom workshop recently from both, that they will be working with their grade levels on. And then, of course, increased communication. Benefits, production, copying and printing, online assessments and projects, increased resources to address curricular needs, assist in the delivery of curriculum and instruction, availability of technology to non-participating grades, because we will be moving that technology to the fourth grade to get them a little bit more accustomed to and further exposed to that. And then the eBooks that are available. Commonly asked questions, why can't my student bring their own device? When you look at a bring your own device policy, lots will fill it. The issue is that you don't have the same platform on every device. So I'm gonna want you to do a writing assignment, okay? But Chaz has his iPhone, Earl has a laptop, and you have an iPad.
And you have an Apple.
Exactly. Of all those, you might only have two people who are able to get a writing assignment done and in the format that you needed to be finished. So in this situation, we're kind of eliminating that by ensuring that everyone has the same platform, everyone has the most updated technology at this time, then everyone's ready. How much is this going to cost? At this time, the devices are looking at about three hundred and twenty to three hundred and fifty dollars. But that's with everything, including the warranty. Um right now, we're working on different deals to see if we can get mice included. Um because with park, you need to have a maps available and a wire, not a wireless, but not the keychain. So with that, it's important to make sure that we have that. If we aren't able to get them for every device, what we plan on doing is purchasing a hundred for the district. So that way, when we are testing for park, we would have a hundred of them available for the grade level that's testing at that time. Um how will the devices be rolled out? Ideally, to staff as soon as possible. Students, we roll them out to classrooms this year. Next year, we would assign individual ones to specific students. What happens when I take the device home? Well, um the device can be hooked up to any other wireless network available, um whether it be home, store, anywhere like that, that can access wa- um wireless internet or wifi. What if I don't have wireless available? We'll make sure that we give students where access is available. Since Roney is a walking district, many times, students will end up standing for an extra couple of minutes here and there, um whether they be working with teachers after school, um or simply we have wireless throughout the entire building available for them. So whether they be in the cafeteria for lunch, it's, it's everywhere in this building. Um one district made it so that way they could access it from the parking lot and fields. Um so that way, if they wanted to drive up by the building with their device, they could simply drive up, get access, and they'd be good to go.
So here's a question, and I don't know anything about this. How do towns, and whatever happened, remember when the city of Philadelphia was gonna go wireless? And they were gonna broadcast, I don't know if it ever happened. Is it possible for our community to be coming?
I know you see that the Verizon portion all the time, and Comcast is trying to have hotspots throughout, you know, from here to Boston, Massachusetts.
There's a hotspot in front of my house.
But we're not ready.
They're gonna get Fios, you know, and just take them out.
Comcast does have a lot of hotspots, if you go on their website.
I have in my section too, not everybody in my, you had.
So what I was saying is, is if something feasible, that it would pay as a district for us before you rolled it out to parents, to see if it's something that as a community, we could get on with the town, with council?
Well, I don't think we would have to do it even before it rolls out. I think we'd still be able to, but I mean, we already have Comcast coming in July. That might be a question Jeanette can even answer, she might know more about that. But um it'd definitely be something that's broad.
I'm just saying it would be another benefit to say to parents.
Absolutely.
You have to have Comcast, because we don't, we're not, we can't even get Fios or anything, we're not fiber optic here.
No, I know, I don't have a break.
You're supposed to.
Yeah, the whole Fios is here.
And just so you know, since we do have Comcast.
Oh, there you are.
You can use, you can go to Comcast hotspot if you do have Comcast.
Um but also, there's a code that will be put on to each of the devices that, like, for example, if you have wireless on your phone, you are able to access our wireless in this building. Um so the devices, whenever they hit, an RSD wireless, whether it be here, Bingham, Downey, all those schools are all under the RSD. Once that code's put in, you have access to the internet in any of those places. So whether you be here or any of the other schools. Yes.
Quick thought, um I brought this up before, homework club. It would be really good idea to try to get a homework club, especially in this school, for another half hour, forty-five minutes thereafter, so that kids have the opportunity to do their homework in school without worrying about whether or not their internet is at home or not.
And as we develop our kind of one budget for next year, that might be something we'd be able to look into um to support students in any academic area and make sure that they have that.
We still have teachers, I'll be honest, like, you know, a long time, teachers do allow students to stay and get their homework done in their classrooms.
They do.
Because they, I'm just saying, it's.
Often.
But if it was publicly announced as a clause, it more.
Now, my parents were aware and.
It's the only thing that made Jordan graduate, Miss Drive.
And not for nothing, but.
What's that?
They're around the homework club.
Some, some people in the district may have Comcast this month, and it might get shut off, and then you don't have internet access for a couple of days. So just a thought, you might wanna try to do a homework club or something back like we had years ago. We have Katie within it.
So is true, like I said, it's always a strategy.
Does this take away textbooks? The answer would be no. It would sell textbooks available in the classrooms, um as resources for students to look to. Um and that way, we would have things available in the situations where students might not have something available at home or might need an additional resource. We are not trying to eliminate textbooks altogether.
We're not trying to eliminate the concepts of basic teaching. This is just like, this is an enhancement to the instructional.
In addition to.
It's not like where the kids are, when they're, or their laptops, they might even block the whole time.
That probably would wanna know, and you know.
No, it's not like that, it's just infusing, again, technology in their hands to get them ready, because, and I, I, we joked about, I mean, I, I mean, Pat likes, we talked about this too, like, if kids come to school, we're right now asking them to power down.
Yeah.
We want these kids still powered up, because that, that's what, that's what the world is going to right now, because, you know, you're locked in.
Get into college without any of this.
No, they can't, they can't. So, you know, a textbook, there's a great video out, out that says to you about, you know, kids opening up a textbook and pushing the pictures in the textbook. You know what I mean, it's like that concept of, you know, a lot of textbooks, once they're written, they're already out.
Already done.
So, you know.
It's already old.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm allowed to present some of this stuff, okay?
No, as we said, if any questions come up, we'd love to know. If there's a question that we're not able to answer, we'll make sure that we have those answers for parents and staff.
So when you say, when you spend that money, right? Does it, do we still have to buy apps? Do we still, what do we still have to buy?
Many of the, when we purchased that, it's coming loaded, the same thing, we're able to get any of the mobile apps out there. And for the most part, some of the things that we're, have our own online subscription, that they will be able to use directly on the device.
So we don't think, if there's not a, it doesn't sound like there's a lot of extra cost, nickel and dime, you know, like, yes.
For example, we looked at a lot of things for math, math, brain pop, other things. We don't wanna purchase something that we're not gonna be consistently implementing from year to year. Where it's, oh, this year we're doing this, and then this year we're doing that. We're trying to offer as much consistency, so we're looking for the programs that are gonna offer us the most um for our message, as far as what we're doing.
I think what the biggest concern that came up in this discussion was the liability. And we need to, maybe before these contracts are drawn up, and I'm bouncing off the attorney.
Absolutely.
The other schools that you've been at, they've been working for a long time, they have all that work now.
I'm sure.
And a lot of times, when we draft those contracts, those schools that we're in contact with, we'll be using what they currently have.
You're like a combination of all.
And we'll have what's best for us.
I have policy as well. You have, obviously, you've disclosed you have talked to other districts, how many?
Um at this point in time, we've spoken to three.
Okay.
We've done walkthroughs on one. Um we're planning on doing a walkthrough of two more. Now, one of the things that I've realized though.
Why are we able to say who they were?
Delcy was one.
Delcy was one. Bridgette has done a full implementation of theirs. And then the other one was, um a school district I'm not gonna mention, because theirs kind of fell through.
Okay.
But I also feel like it's a good example to have as to why it didn't work. And I personally feel like theirs didn't work because they didn't really invest in it as much. They weren't sending the devices home. And for me, I felt as though, um speaking with teachers, students didn't really care about the device, where it's like, you know, they were dropping them here and there. I mean, for me, you know, my heart would stop whenever.
And Gloucestershire has done this for, I think, around six, six years now.
Yes.
They're very good.
Yeah. Um and the feedback from the administration there is.
Incredible.
The kids really, it's not like they're treating it like, they treat it like.
Well, and Bridgette, it's working fairly well.
In terms of, in terms of what you're saying, is what happens if something happens to it? The same thing, wouldn't you do the same thing if someone destroys a textbook? I mean, it's on a much bigger level, but you have something.
If something were to happen to it, basically, what the one contract is, the company just, they will cut you a check. If it costs you three hundred and eight dollars, if something were to happen to it, they would cut you a check for three hundred and eight dollars. And it's your choice to either buy another one, or you can.
Right.
You know, put that back into the system or something, if you don't think the kid deserved it or whatever.
When you say, when the question was, um, does it take? When you say, when the question was, um, does it take away textbooks now, obviously, but, I mean, will there be? Uh, in other words, my biggest thing with textbooks is by the time you pay the, pay for them, I mean, they're already, I mean, is there?
The textbook will be on their, on their device.
Well, that's my point, like, because there's so many ways of remotely, you know, updating the inform, like, if you, if you go in the classroom right now, pull a textbook, and you read a chapter, and you go online, it's already different, it really already is.
And also save kids, I mean, you.
I don't wanna take away, listen, I come from a family.
Kids, the fifty pound backpack they're looking back for.
That's my biggest thing, no, I picked up Gregor's backpack tomorrow.
But I think also, what I'm saying is for the heart, like, we'll still have other resources available within the school, whereas if a student doesn't have an electronic device, there will be things available for that student.
All right, fine.
Um, so, you know, not that.
You don't have one freaking one out of mind.
If there are no other specific questions, we still wanna quickly go through the agenda before the regular meeting.
Thank you, Dr..
Thank you.
I apologize that it's so long.
Come on, for this one minute.
Are there any questions under the financial report? Uh, if you had a chance to review the secretary's reports or superintendent's reports or principal's reports, any questions there?
Superintendent's reports that were already down?
Yep, sure, secretary or superintendent's.
Okay, yeah, I was all right, all right, okay. Um, just Mark, uh, under district updates, um.
We did not get the money.
No, as far as you were, it was, we were, uh, was awarded to Downing and Bolt's, right now.
We already got Bingham's.
And, right, Bingham's was from before, right, now you said you're gonna discuss the future of our lunch program at, let me.
Well, I love to talk about that during this, during.
Tonight, right, about the same, tonight, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, we can talk about it.
I just wanna know.
Tonight or another, we can always push it to March, that's not a burning topic, I just want to discuss it. It was only rewarded on health and safety issues, that's why we get the money to upgrade to the kitchens. Um, I know speaking with Earl, um, we thought we were supporting too much of our food service program, I think you noticed that right now in the case.
What was happening is they were, you were charging, the district was charging, I tell you bad habit, I always save you money in my district.
I understand that, we're just.
The district was charging the cost of the cafeteria needs, the cafeteria program, that's not an appropriate cost line for, for the cafeteria program. The cafeteria program cost lines are supposed to only be for providing the food that children eat and, and the ser- the servers and those kinds of folks. So the classroom aides are really supposed to be, uh, the playground aides, cafeteria aides are supposed to be, uh, believe it or not, charged with which's account. Uh, the operational. So we made that change, and as of right now, you're turning a small profit on the cafeteria, a couple thousand dollars, so you should at least break even this year.
But aren't some of the aides considered food servers now, how do you?
Well, any of them that are actually, anybody who's actually a food server gets charged to the cafeteria program.
To cafeteria.
This is just people who are there to keep an eye on the kids.
These are like your, yeah.
Gotcha. And you're talking about evaluations and walkthroughs, what is the difference between these two platforms, between Teachcape and Realtime, and why are we?
We talked about this before, um, a couple months back, because Teachcape is a platform that costs, Sean, was that sixteen?
Uh, for our district, it was around twelve.
Twelve thousand, and I believe Realtime is around.
Fifteen to twenty-three hundred.
Yeah, so we're looking to save around ten thousand dollars right there, and all the information that we use right now for Teachcape, Realtime is probably, we already use Realtime as a street management system. So it's kind of, to me, which Paul and Steve, it would be an act of progression, and just to use that and use that money in other areas for the, for the Teachcape platform. And we've had some issues with Teachcape throughout the year, which everybody has, the state, including, take the twelve dollar district tax.
And is our last year or June seventeen?
Our last day of school. I don't have a lot of time like that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll leave, we'd like to make some, um, possibly make a couple changes, depending on, we're gonna wait until, I got some good advice. Wait until, you know, the last, the last snowflake dropped before we begin more adjustments.
How to get through March, right?
Yes.
I just had, I have questions for principals too, but I can wait till medium time, if you wanna. And I have one for the, the, I do have one about physicals, the nurse, uh, Bolt's nurses report, he's. Uh, she states here, training basketball is finished, I have some physicals that need to be reviewed. Uh, I don't understand, I looked up our policy, I don't see any timelines set up as far as physical exams for sports, and.
They can't start until it's done.
Excuse me?
They, last year, a diet they could not start until a physical is done.
Yes, but reading this report, that's not the way it reads, so.
Where, where are you on that report?
Um, it's on the back of Mrs. Prisik's, um, report under sport physical exam.
Yeah, I'll check into that, I don't know why she put that on there, I don't know if that was a cut and paste error.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, I've seen something like this come up before, where we're in either mid-season or the season's almost over, and these reports are coming through that.
Yeah, I'll go check.
No, physicals are not quite done yet.
And they would have to be done, that's like something.
Why, I mean, there's also, yes.
They're done, the doctors checked them, she has to chart them.
Okay.
So what she's doing is, before sports start, I know from working on the.
Yes, absolutely.
Sports starts, she has them all in case of the doctors, but then every one of them has to be on their chart.
Correct.
So what she's working on is charting.
So she's charging these, okay, okay.
It should be worded that way then.
Yes, yes.
Yes, she's charting them, they're done.
Could she be instructed to say that when she?
I, he will.
I think I will.
Yeah, but there's nothing showing that states in our policy, at least from what I read, that of course, participation cannot begin until all of this is approved, so.
I think it's the wording then, from what that's. I'll have to check me about these.
Okay, that's great, all right, thank you.
Any questions, let's see here, um, property transportation.
Oh, I have a question for Earl, are, am I still required for these, um, school board workshops that's supposed to go off tomorrow if I have to go? Did you remember where you were?
No.
I do not have to get discovered or screwed?
I think only one person had to, actually, him.
Okay, all right, so that was a glitch in the system somehow, sorry, thanks.
All right, Earl, on the personnel?
I have a question on that, I just wanna just clarify, uh, prior to Dr. McCarron starting, which will be in April, will have a property certification placed?
Are you happy?
Um, very good.
And also with, uh, Earl leaving effective April first, does that affect the systems three thousand training dates where his name appears in May and October?
He's still gonna be on as an interim, or as an ad need.
Yeah, I knew that.
He'll still be on as an ad need, so he'll still be.
Okay, okay.
Anything else on the personnel? Finance?
Is that a question about the purchase of the pickup truck running the finance?
Yes, it is, I think it's the last.
I'm assuming this is a cost effective measure that we're purchasing this pickup truck to offset the need for?
Absolutely, um, well, I'm just gonna inject some light in this conversation as well. We spent, I think, close to, I, I know the one truck we have right now is on its last, last legs. Um, we spent close to twelve thousand dollars this year in plowing, salting, shoveling, and everything else with the district. On the average winner, what do we spend, Mr. Burr?
Anywhere from eight to ten.
Okay, so.
And this is above average, obviously.
Yeah, it, I, this is like, we'll hope we don't have to again.
We do our own shoveling.
What's that?
We do our own shoveling.
Oh, yes.
So on plowing, it's not, shoveling won't be incurred in that number.
No, no, quite on the salt.
But one of the things we, uh, you wanna talk a little more about this?
Well, this is, we're looking at a lot of things and we have the personnel to do our own plowing and with the right equipment and solving.
Yes, thanks to you and your research before, thank you.
So we're able to do the job that we're paying somebody else to do.
Okay.
So we're looking at it as in several years, it'll pay itself off.
Okay, so the, the current truck that we have is on its way out the door, and this, this purchase will be housed where our current truck is?
Yeah, we have, with the, the, uh, things we're doing with the garage as far as straightening it up and things like that, we'll have plenty of, of space. We're still gonna utilize the current truck, because the way we're looking at it is we can have the current truck that still runs, we can use that as our soft truck, and the other one can be as our, uh, trucks.
It couldn't operate as plow, that's how.
Right.
Right, yeah, that's.
And you have, and you have a standard ability to maintain your vehicles as well, okay?
I mean, most things, the modern things, anything for an agent, you have to.
There's still another piece of equipment too that we may be looking at, that's a multi-purpose little mini tractor, um, that would have forklifts on it as well as a scoop bucket and a mower deck. So it'll serve as a mower, it'll serve to help him handle materials when he gets his supplies in, he'll be able to take them off the truck on a pallet, which would be much faster than having the guys unload it one piece at a time.
Okay.
Uh, and it would also be able to do the sidewalks and all that practically.
Here, this way.
All four, all three buildings.
And how would you transport it from one building to the next?
Well, you can drive it.
Does it come with a trailer?
You can drive it, you can drive it.
It's driver's.
We, we can tag it, drive it.
You can tag it and drive it, okay.
Of course, the burrows, when the burrow comes out, they, they come out in many shapes and sizes, what they, what they plow in.
Yeah, I know, well, again, just like, you wanna make sure you're following.
It's a, it's a, we're gonna get a, uh, sub, subcompact tractor in this school, about a twenty-five horsepower tractor.
I have a question about this real quick, um, the burrow can plow or work on?
The burrow. You talk about the burrow a little bit, um, they help when they can?
They help when they can, but it's usually over six or eight inches worth of snow, where they're willing to assist us, and by the time they get to us sometimes, it's just not.
Yes, that was acquired years ago too, and we were just told they didn't have the personnel to do it.
They have seven people.
Hey, yeah.
What was the comment total?
I think we probably need to give it back, personally, because, like I'm saying, thirty-two thousand dollars for a truck, when we have a burrow that come, I mean, personally, they, they do a pretty decent job. Sometimes they could do a little bit of a better job, but we're, I feel like it's almost double paying in a way. We have a service here in Canada that could probably do that, it's not a big town.
We've discussed this, we've met with the burrow early in the year, and that one didn't, did not seem, did not seem to be an option that would get us open, like, for these two hour delays, I don't think that we have.
No.
And just as a side note, I worked in my time, three different school districts and three different communities, and those burrows never plowed.
Yeah, it's not, no.
Most of the schools are about to build.
And most districts this size have a vehicle that has plow and other things that plow as well, you know, something.
I mean, our burrow couldn't, I mean, we had to rearrange recycling and everything just for the guys to, to do their regular work on top of, you know, all the bound, they were. They have cots that they borrow from, I would know this, they have cots that they borrow from local council to put down at public works, so that some could plow while someone out during the day did their regular work. I mean, there's seven of them, here's demographics, Runnymede has seven total employees, and Bellmar has seven just in their parks and recreation. Runnymede has seven total employees in public works, and I think that's a lot there is.
Good questions, uh, how about curriculum? Any questions there?
Oh, I do have a question, Dr. McCarron, maybe you can answer this, um, just to be NACO for field experience, what exactly does that entail?
Um, it's fifteen hours through Camden County College that, um, the teacher signed off on, but the student, um, will be coming in to observe those classes.
Just observation is all of this?
Yeah, it's like a practicum, they do, you know, just observation, it's like in the first or second year now, it's, it's not only just your student teaching your fourth year, now it's a series of years.
So now they have field experience, practicum, and student teaching, is that how it's set up now, okay. Thanks.
And last, policies and public relations. If I have not, could I have emotional authority to close the work session being? First by Pat?